Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Ray, would you lay this place?
Father, help me thank you once again for bringing us together. It takes a tough and hard time. Bless our home and our family, look on the city of Jacksonville. Bless us to give us forceful courage to take care of business for the city of Jacksonville and its residents. In the name of Jesus, we ask for great Lord. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. You may be seated. Good evening. Welcome to the July 3rd Jacksonville City Council meeting. Council members, if you would, please make sure your mics are down or pulled close to you and that they are on. And roll call at this time, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Here.
Rupel.
Here.
McLeary.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
LeBron.
Here.
Moss.
Here.
Twitty.
Here.
Kenman.
Here.
Kim.
Kim.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
One second, sir.
All right. We have a quorum, so we are good to go. Before you, you have the minutes from our June 5th meeting. Be familiarizing yourself with those for next time for approval, but at this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes presented to you for our May 22nd meeting.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? Thank you. Consent agenda, you have that given to you in your packet. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion and a second. All in favor of this consent agenda, let them know saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? Thank you. Moving on down, Police Department. Ordinance 1791 waiving competitive bidding for Jacksonville Police Department vehicles.
I move that we place ordinance 1791 on first reading.
All right, we have a motion and a second to place on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name?
We need to.
Yeah, we will next time. That will be where we'll go.
We're done waiting.
All right, go for now.
Ordinance number 1791, ordinance waiving competitive bidding for the Jacksonville Police Department vehicles for appropriate implementation and access for department and city of Jacksonville representatives, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. And before discussion, just wanted to note the difference between the new ordinance that you have in front of you and the one in the packet is just the vendor.
Any discussion or questions about that?
I do want Chief Hibbs, we spoke earlier, but I do want him to come forth and just kind of give us a little bit of overview of the process. Thank you.
What was the question?
The question was, so when we spoke earlier today and I asked you about the need for the vehicles, why? Because there were some questions from some of the citizens about why is this an emergency, right? And why we aren't using a local dealer.
These are Chevy Tahos, PPV they call, police pursuit vehicle. It's a kind of a fleet package made for police departments. Not every dealer gets them. Chevrolet allocates a certain number to each, to the dealerships that ask for. There's only three dealerships in Arkansas that got them this year that requested them. They didn't get the numbers they asked for. A lot of things affect that, like the strike last year, autoworker strike, tariffs, parts. There's a whole bunch of things that go into it. So at the end, they only make them one time a year. I ordered them last year, I put our name on three of them, probably last November, and they're just now starting to roll into dealerships in Arkansas. The dealership that, excuse me, we get them from Superior in Solomon Springs is only one of three that gets them, their police package, and the other dealers are already out. There's a state contract that was not awarded at first. Chevrolet did not participate. There's a second state contract that came out in which they did because there were not enough police vehicles on the first. The state contract was with Bell Chevrolet in Little Rock. They are not, they do not even have Tahos right now. We, of course, use the black and two-wheel drive, not four-wheel drive, two-wheel drives. There are only, the dealership we got them from ordered 30. They're down to four left. They're holding on to these three for us. After that, there'll be four. Fifty-one thousand is less than I budgeted for. It's also $500 less per vehicle than what's the state contract. So we're getting them cheaper than the state contract, which is why I want to waive bidding. We are, we have been short on vehicles for many years, and we have an older fleet. We have upgraded it in the last few years, and it's getting better. However, I'm hiring a lot of officers, and we need more vehicles to put them in. We also are getting rid of older vehicles that are not safe or just cost too much to maintain and keep running. So we're always either getting rid of them or buying them, and that'll be every year. I do have one that was just recently wrecked, one of the 24 Tahos, and I got the quote today, about $30,000 to fix it. It was pretty bad. I'm probably going to part that out, use it for parts, take parts from that one, put in one of the new ones to help save money on the outfit. The reason why we need them is one, because we just lost one, but also the dealerships don't want to sit on cars on their lot for 30, 90 days, whatever it's going to be, pay insurance, inventory and all that. If anything happens to them, they have to pay for it. They don't like stuff just sitting there that's been sold. So it doesn't make sense to wait 30 days or 90 days when they're sitting right there.
Right.
Chief, how many vehicles would this get you total?
Oh, that, I don't know. That's a good question. I thought about that earlier today. I need to look at our list. We got, we sell the older ones on Gov. deals. We auction them off. We're getting rid of like Impalas and stuff that are really old. We haven't gotten rid of Tahos. Tahos are holding up like we expect. Other than the one that's wrecked, the only one, we've been doing good on maintaining, taking care of them, and the officers take them serious. They really like the newer ones, and when they're newer, they have one driver, maybe two drivers, they take better care of them. So we're doing, we're getting lower maintenance costs, and the only ones we're getting rid of are ones that just won't stay running, stay started. And sometimes the older Dodge Chargers were costing $20,000 a year to maintain. It was terrible. And we're trying to get rid of those. So how many I have, I don't know, and that would count trucks and everything, CID cars, admin cars, I call them. CID has some. Now, when it comes to CID cars, if it's not a pursuit rated vehicle, like for CID detectives, we get like a Chevrolet, I think it's a Acadia, there's a Terrain, maybe it's a Terrain. We do buy those local. I don't get a police package on those because they don't drive fast or patrol in them. I'd get those, the last probably three to five that we bought were from Gwatin. Gwatin doesn't get the police package Tahos. Those are awarded only to big dealerships around the country, so they're hard to get. And they only make them one time a year. They don't make them all year long. They've limited that over the last five years.
So if you were to get some more, you'd have to put in in advance?
We, yeah. The Chevrolet opens up the allocations to the dealerships around, I think, November, once a year. That's usually, they sell out within a day to those big dealerships around the country. So it's not open all the time. So the big dealerships want to know from us ahead of time, even before I'm done with budget, about how many we're going to want, because they need to know how many to put in for. Superior in Solomon Springs gets the most. They're the biggest supplier of the fleet vehicles in the state. And so a dealership in Fayetteville got a few, they're already out, and Bell got the state contract, and they're out of the black four, two-wheel drives. I don't get four-wheel drives, we get two-wheel drive. And they're a little bit cheaper, too. It's a little more, yeah. But I don't, I don't know if we have a need for, a couple times a year we have snow, but you know, we did have those, the Ford SUVs that we do still have a lot of, our all-wheel drive, not four-wheel drive, but their all-wheel drive, and we do enjoy those during the snow. That's only a couple times a year. Can I answer your question? Remember what your question was?
No, it's not. It's you, yes.
Thanks, chief.
Any other questions or discussion?
I made a motion to approve the purchase of vehicles.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion then to, excuse me, approve on the first reading, suspend the rules in place on second. Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Here.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
All right, excuse me. All right, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1791 on second reading, suspend the rules in place on third and final reading.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
All right, finally, entertain a motion to approve and adopt ordinance 1791 on this date. Motion and multiple seconds. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
All right, then, entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Ordinance 1791 is now enacted. Next, moving on, we have a appeal hearing for rezoning denial of Forest Oak subdivision Phase Four from R zero to a planned unit development. So with that, do we have, well, actually, hold on one. It is now 6:11 opening time of hearing, but represent, do we have representation of, all right, join me, y'all can come on forward, please. Tell, state your name, tell us who you are.
Sure. John Kennon, one of the developers of the neighborhood. I'd like to thank Mayor Elmore for having us address the council, and thank you, council, for hearing us out. I want to start out that we are going to withdraw the appeal. I wanted to keep this meeting to clarify what our scope of work is. I think there's been a lot of misinformation and confusion about what we're trying to do, and I kind of wanted to clear the air with the council tonight. We are going to resubmit a different plan to the planning committee. That will be hopefully a compromise of what we were trying to do at the beginning, which was 50-foot lots. Didn't seem to go over very well, so I think a mistake we made initially was not addressing the residents in the median area, so we will do that. We will rent out a space and have an open forum to show and take any Q and A that the residents of Jacksonville have concerning this, so. Any questions you have for me tonight, I'm open to that, to clarify the air.
Yeah. At, because you're withdrawing the appeal, yeah, it would not be a time of discussion because, because it could possibly be a future business going on down the road, but thank you, citizens appreciate that, as shown from that previous meeting with the planning commission, so.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Next, on, oh, I'm sorry. It is now 6:13. Time of the public hearing is closed for that appeal. Moving on, ordinance 1790, amending Jacksonville Municipal Code 2.04.025, effective date of legislation. Entertain a motion to place 1790 on first reading.
So moved.
Motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye. Ordinance number 1790, ordinance amending Jacksonville Municipal Code 2425, effective date of legislation and for other purposes.
Any questions, discussion, comments? All right. Entertain a motion to approve 1790 on first reading, suspend the rules in place on second.
So moved.
Motion, second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1790 on second reading, suspend the rules in place on third. Motion.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
All right, then entertain a motion to approve and adopt 1790 on this date.
So moved. Second.
Motion, multiple seconds. Roll call.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
And first, okay. That is all for 1790. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 1792, dissolving the Jacksonville Historic District Commission, repealing Chapters 2.26 of Jacksonville Municipal Code. Entertain a motion to place 1792 on first reading. Motion.
Second.
And second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Deets.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McLeary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
Ray.
No.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Ordinance number 1792, an ordinance dissolving the Jacksonville Historic District Commission, repealing Chapter 2.26 of the Jacksonville Municipal Code and for other purposes. Sorry, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Okay. Questions or discussion?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember, hold on. Sir, Councilmember Ray was mentioned ago. Yes, sir.
Why do we want to get rid of our history?
I can directly address that. We are not getting rid of any history whatsoever at all. All this is doing is dissolving the city from participation with the, or the use of the historic commission that was formed. The history society that was created several years, many years ago, and the Jacksonville Historical District, which came from the society, are still intact. This does not affect them whatsoever. All this is doing is removing or eliminating the commission, which actually made it a part of the city government. That is all that is doing. It is, will end ties for the city paying anything for the history, what was the commission? So it will be no use of city property or taxpayer dollars going to pay their utilities or paying other things of that nature. It is not, to get rid of any of the artifacts, any artifacts like they're that old, you don't want to be, of any of the items located within the museum that is all still there to be either picked up by owners of that property that it has been alone from, or by the history society, if they want to continue in that form, if they want to have another museum, they are more than welcome to do it. It just won't be any city-owned property. That's all this is doing. It's not getting rid of any history.
You don't, you don't have a building, a public building to grant, to welcome visitors to come and view the history of Jacksonville. Here, some people grew up in Jacksonville and want to come back and show their grandeur in the city of Jacksonville, and there's no public view anymore. You took all the artifacts out and give them back. And I think they should be on display, just like they was on display now. When we shut the little building down, the commission met with me, and I told him, you told me that you was going to contact the museum curator.
Yes.
And the museum curator, I don't know that she agreed to take it over. So I quit working on it because I know the museum creator.
Curator.
Creator had more experience than I had, I did. And I know that she would be more than welcome to, to reorganize. And so I stopped my effect of reorganizing thing, and everybody was talking like, what we going to reopen back up? Now you come to them and say we going to shut it down.
No.
Give all the artifacts back to the people who donated the artifacts to the museum.
No, that's not.
I think they should just be still, still open for the public to come and view the city of Jacksonville's history.
Well, that's not quite accurate, an accurate depiction of it. We are not getting rid of anything. If an owner, people have been contacting for members of the commission saying, hey, I would like to get my stuff, or I would still like to have my stuff exhibited. And yes, we have made, I have made contact with Elizabeth at the Military Museum, who has said she would love to curate for this program. There is another group who was the original members of the society that would still like to do their own thing. And if that's what they want to do, they can. They don't have to go to the Military Museum, they, or use Elizabeth. That's an option or a choice that has been presented, and the Military Museum is willing to do that. They would be glad to. They have what I think is a pretty good plan in place to keep all of these items on display. But no, we are not telling people they have to come get their stuff, not at all. So it is a total personal choice. We are basically, as a city government, we are not a part of it, so is what it comes down to. The, and the reason, let me finish this one thing. The main reason this is taking place is the commission, as it was operating as a commission, was not operating appropriately or as it should be. We were not having financials turned in to finance, we were not having minutes turned in from commission meetings. So there was a lot of liability that was actually being placed on the city because of the way in which it was operated. Then that, on top of that, with the incident that happened last summer with everything that was going on there, this is the best course of action for the city to take with it. We are not telling anybody they can't have history here. We're not saying that we're going to stop it or we're going to throw anything away. It is just not going to be a part of the Jacksonville city government. That is all that it is that's going on here.
Well, my disagreement is that, that we reorganize the commission for the historic commission, historic commission reorganize, and keep the building open to the public, show that Joe Blow can stop by during Operation Owls and view the city of history of Jacksonville. You know my speech?
Yes, that is. As she said, the building is, that is not a part of this. This is just dissolving the commission, the association, so the city of Jacksonville will not have the history commission, which has not always been in existence, and that was a fairly recent creation, so.
Yes, it's an ideal, somebody's ideal, it was a great ideal.
Any other questions, cops? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair said the city would not have any other obligations to it. What is the actual cost that we are paying as a city?
As a city, what we are paying is, we're giving use of the building, but then we are paying utilities, we are paying insurance, maintenance, upkeep, everything that has been required to maintain or to, for the, for the museum to occupy the space. For an exact dollar figure, that I do not have, but that is what we have been doing.
Mayor, was the building given to?
Was that?
Was the building given to us?
Was that building given to us? That, I can't speak to the history. I'm pretty sure that one was not, what was given to us was the pawn shop that was just down the street from that, Gem's Pawn Shop? Because that's, that's been a while. That was the building that was, that was given to the city. I do not believe so. Susan, do you have?
The building, I, was donated a long time ago, and it was used as the wage center.
Okay.
Do we know how long it's been since the museum has been fully operational?
August of last year.
So it hasn't been open since August of last year?
No.
It's been sitting right now?
Yes.
Is it a group of people that has?
Is it a group of people that's willing to?
Yes.
Be over there?
Yes.
So, it's just, like I said, this is the dissolving of the commission. Anybody can still operate as it is before. I mean, when they were the historical society and gathering and having meetings and so forth, that's more than happy to do it. It's dissolving the commission.
Which doesn't dissolve the board, which is a society.
Okay.
And the, and the museum was operational due donations. That's how it was operating.
Yes, it was, it was, it was operating through, like I said, us taking care of a lot of the building side of it, but then they were operating under donations, or, excuse me, it wasn't, there were donations, but there was a $5 admission fee to go in to the, to the museum.
And those records have not been able to be gotten?
No.
If anyone even wanted to start it over?
Yeah, we have, we have not seen or been given those. We have been given bank statements, but that's it. All right, right now, then, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 1792 on second reading, excuse, or, approve on first reading, suspend the rules in place on second.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?